Fox Ford Town Council Budget Meeting for April 13th. Is there a roll call on that, Diggs?
I believe so.
I forgot my agenda, sorry.
Councilor Reese?
Here.
Councilor Morrison?
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Bissonette?
Here.
Mayor Stewart?
Here.
Councilor Ormsby?
Here.
Councilor Bishop?
Here.
Councilor Wright?
Here. All right, we've got budgets to go over. The first one is debt service.
The two general funded debt items are $15,412, which is the annual payment made from the general fund to the sewer fund for debt service on the swirl concentrator building down here at the corner by the bridge. At the time that project was done, the town committed this amount annually towards interest on that project. And the other is all three years of the road bond. We had a loan for year one, and then we did years two and three and combined that into one loan. So in the third year of the first one, and then the first year of the second one, each of these loans is seven years in length, so there will be an overlap of four years, and then three years on the last one that's on its own.
Any questions?
And you'll note that the adopted amount for '22-'23 was $100,000 more than the amount expended for this year, and that provides a cushion against the amount needed for next year's payment. At the time we budgeted that, we budgeted higher than we knew that payment was to be to make the transition less steep in payments.
Questions? Doing business, I guess. Get rid of it. All right, next is fire EMS combined.
Good evening.
Sorry.
And everybody should have an updated copy.
And the one I'm putting on the screen is also the updated one.
Okay, just to go down through these lines with you and explain a little bit is the proposed increases and percentages of where we're at right now, year-to-date. And it should be, all these should be at 75% as of the end of March, and we have three months left in the budget, so keep that in mind as we move forward. I'll refer to the budget lines as they are on the left. We refer to them as like the O-1 line, as our payroll line for fire and EMS. The proposed is a 1.31%, that is due to new hires and steps of people that are hired with more years of service than a regular person. This happened several times in the past year, and may happen in the coming year. At the current time, we're at 65% spent on that line. The reason that that's a little bit lower is because of the turnover rate that we've had. I think everyone's been paying attention to that. We've been up and down. We've replaced two or three different people throughout a year or two. And with that, when you hire people, it goes up and down as to who you hire. You can't hire someone with 10 or 15 years' experience at a starting rate, and they don't expect that. We haven't been doing that in a while, so. The next line down, the O-2 line, is our extra and overtime line. I'm not going to go down through every one of them. You can see the people there with weeks of vacation. Some of those are new, that have been hired within the last few weeks, few months. Some have started at a 10-year step, and some have started at a starting step. And new employees coming forward that were just hired in the last week or so will be below that. You'll see a 30.40% proposed increase there, which looks large. As I said, these are for new employees, and the steps higher, plus there's two new employees added in there from last year. It's actually down to one in this coming year. And right now, that line is at 57%. The O-3 line is our total call payroll. Again, it looks as if there's a substantial proposed increase there. At the current time, we are at 99.54%. The reasoning for the major proposed increase is that we're looking to go from the 12-hour per diem to 24-hour to help cover second and third ambulance runs and fire calls, so we'll have someone in the station there. So, as I said, right now, to date, we are at 99.5%. And that's going to go well over for this coming year, so. The O-4 line is the training payroll. You can see a proposed decrease of almost 30% there. The reasoning for that, we've reduced that. We've looked back, and due to the number of people showing up for calls, the call department that we have, which we have good people, we have a lot less people. So we did look back at that and proposed to reduce that by almost 30%. At the current time, that's 32% spent, so. The O-5 line, which is the officer salaries, that's a, some of that is a contract issue. That's in the contract. Some of those are not. The part-time, the head engineer are called, lieutenants are called, captains are not. So then there's a 0% proposed increase there. But it is a contract issue. Total chief's expense, 0% proposed increase there. That is 47% spent at this time. Clothing allowance, again, is a contract issue. That's in the union contract. Total dues and travel shows a proposed 14.9% increase. That's due to increase in dues for the different associations that are there. That is a 87% spend to current date. The 24 line, total training and hiring expense, there's a 0% proposed increase there. That is a 88% to current date spend. The 31 line, total office supplies, 0% increase there. That's 48% spend to current date. The line 32, you'll see no increase there. These are tough, because some of these we don't get until, and you're going to see in the police budget also, we don't get some of these until like May or June. In the last few weeks, we got one for Spelman that was $700 more. They don't send things out, they just send for bills. So they are tough to budget, but next year we hope to be more in line, due to what we're running to, and I'll get into police budget in a minute, and I don't want to get forward here, but. That is 0% spent at this point due to billing. So that will come through before the end of June and will probably be all spent, and maybe more, hopefully not, but. Total postage line 33, you'll see an 18% increase due to stamps going up, postage going up. That is 81% spent at this time. Advertising, you'll see zero. We're doing a lot of free advertising at this point, on websites, through MMA, through Indeed, and things like that, so we don't feel that we need an increase. But if we were to go bigger nationwide at some point on the fire side or EMS side, we may need a little bit of money to do that. The 37 line, which is for firefighting supplies, you'll see a 3% proposed increase there. That's due to the cost of equipment going up, and that, just so we're aware, we don't purchase everything upfront. We purchase things as we need it. Some of these two lines actually have to do with grants also. We get the fire act grant every year, which we have a 50% match on, and things of that nature. So that is at 22% at this point, but will go down in the months to come. 38 line, which is ambulance supplies, is the same thing. There's a proposed 12.67% increase on that line. Those are the supplies for the ambulance itself. That is 88% spent at the current time. 41 line, which is fire equipment purchase, 3% increase due to the price of equipment going up. That is 13% spent now, and it goes along with the fire grants also. 42 line, which is EMS equipment purchase, you'll see a proposed 2.94% increase. And that, right now, that line is 100% spent with three months to go. 51 line, total equipment maintenance and repairs, 0% proposed increase there. That line is 64% spent at this point. 61, the telephones, 0% increase there, 67% spent at this given time. Fuel costs for vehicles, that's the town bid, and that's 65, excuse me, 65% spent with a proposed 13.5. Again, the town, I mean, the Joe Asag does that. Contracted services line 90, account, 0% increase. That's 100% spent at this point. 91 line, miscellaneous, there's a proposed 14.29% increase. That is, I believe, like 111% spent at this point, $140 in the hole as of March, so.
That's where we don't have the personnel to cover, and you have to get someone out of Orange County or something to jump on a rig, right? That's what the ALS backup is?
Yeah, I'm actually, that was a miscellaneous line, but the next line under that, Steve, the 92 line is the ALS backup. We've actually proposed a 40% decrease in that line. That's 20% spent at this point. What we did there is we went back three years, and we've cut the number from 10, from 10 to 6, because the staffing levels being up due to increase in personnel over the last few years, so we've needed less of that backup. And the 93 line below that, collection costs, I went back three years on that, and there's a proposed decrease of 50% in that line, and that's at 5% now. So the overall proposed increase is 12.95% in that budget. A lot of that, majority of it has to do with the first two lines of adding the person and adding the overtime due to vacation and all that stuff that's in the O-2 line.
I'd like to note that if, at the council meeting later on, if you accept the fuel bid, that is 50 cents less than what I had budgeted for diesel and a corresponding 50% almost on gas for, so that will impact the highway budget you saw. It will impact any budget, certainly police, fire, as well. So this, if that is accepted, the fuel line item here will go down proportionally when the $3 rate is applied instead of the 3.50 rate, which is 82 cents less than we contracted for last year. So that's an area that we will have some reductions.
And the only other thing I'll add to that is that number was up, 13 or 14% in the last few days. We did get it down to 12.95%. And this budget, to keep in mind, is actually two budgets. If you remember a few years back, we combined fire and EMS. They used to be separate budgets, so this is two different budgets put together.
What's the collection cost?
That's what Jackie, I believe, does upstairs, on collections, on unpaid bills and stuff.
Okay.
It's the fee that townness agency charges the town when it collects on outstanding ambulance accounts that are referred to collection.
Sean, can you kind of just walk me through this O-3 line again? We had adopted last year 122, and we increased that by almost 100,000.
Right. The difference in that is that if you look at where it says 3.65 per diem.
Right.
That was at 12 hours last year, and we're proposing to put that to 24 hours this year, and that's the better part of $90,000 to cover like night shifts and.
How did you cover that before?
Well, halfway through it, I think we changed it over. Halfway through it, because a lot of the time, we didn't have anyone in the station at night. If an ambulance went out, we had nobody. So we changed it, or was it halfway through the year, and put the per diem on to cover some of that night shift when the rigs went out.
And is that reflected in that same line for expended this year?
Yes. Well, yes, but it was changed in the middle, so.
Right, but I'm saying that's where it's showing up, though, is when you changed it someplace.
Yes.
In November, December, or?
Yeah, I can't remember exactly when we changed it, but we changed it.
I'd have to look at the.
And that is at the 99.5%.
Right, well, that's why, that's why I was kind of wondering how we missed the number so much last year, but if you've changed, if you.
We changed it. We didn't miss it, we just.
Right, well, I'm saying, you, yeah, you had change in the way that you were doing things.
Right, exactly, yes.
Is there anybody that comes in in the middle of the night to just cover the ambulance or cover the rigs anymore like they used to? Do you have anybody from the actual call department, like part-time?
Not much.
No?
Not much.
It's not, not a thing?
No. It's normally the people that are there. You have a structure fire, you get people who will come out usually, ambulance calls, if you call for a driver 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning, it's get or miss. We have a lot of dedicated people that do it now. We have two or three people that are retired that do it. They don't usually own us and do whatever, 7:00. They do it from 11:00 to 7:00 during the day. We do have a few younger people, females, that we've hired in the last few weeks, that will fill a lot of those night vacancies. But having said that, we just hired one of them as a full-time position, so that one's gone, and she worked a lot of hours, I mean, a lot. So it's kind of get or miss when you take one out, put one in.
So you're operating off of three. You've got the call department, which is not really as much of a thing to rely on, per diem, and then full-time staff.
Right, correct.
So this increase really comes from what you're trying to turn into per diem?
Yes, that increase is adding 12 hours a day all year long to per diem, from 12-hour per diem to 24-hour per diem, and trying to fill it.
Okay.
If you notice, back in '21-'22, the call payroll number was 190, the budget was $198,000. And that reflected that they were going to do 24/7, the 24-hour per diem availability. And during that year, what happened, if you look at what was expended, it was $147,000. And that was because they were unable to fill shifts the way that they had hoped to be able to with per diem. And so in the current year's budget, we had reduced that to try and bring it more in line with the number of shifts that we were actually able to cover as opposed to what we budgeted for, if you understand what I mean. We budgeted for, to be able to do 24/7 in that first year, and we're not able to find enough per diems to cover those shifts. So that was, caused the reduction last year in that budget. To look at it, the fact that they've located more per diems to cover the shifts allows it to be what it was. And the other thing per diems have done is cover regular, when we lose somebody, a per diem is then covering for a regular person. That's not coming out of the regular full-time pay. That's coming out of the call payroll. So, which is why the full-time percentage expenditure is lower right now than the percentage of the year, because some of those shifts have been covered. When we're missing a full-time person, a per diem is covering those, those shifts, and my.
No, that's correct. And we actually, starting this week, since we're down so many, we've hired two to fill in, but one of them is not going to start till July 1st. And not to get confused here, that does not include the third open position at this point, because we're down so many people, we still have that position to fill. But we have brought in a retired banker firefighter with 40 years' experience, who's a paramedic, to fill in two or three days a week to fill the vacant shifts along with the per diems. And we've hired several, I mean, Mike, we hired per diems in the last month or so, four or five?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we're getting there, it's just slow.
Yeah. So does that, some of my knowledge has probably expired, so.
That's all right.
At the time, there was like an ISO rating? There was a rating for the amount of staffing you had to have for population?
The, the number of people on a shift to be in, what's the right?
The ISO rating, Mike, we follow, ISO rates a community. They come in every 10 years to rate your fire delivery systems or water. It's very convoluted. I can speak for four hours tonight, and we'd all walk out of here, headaches.
Mike, if you want to come up, some people in the town, that'd be good.
Yep.
Please, thank you.
So we follow NFPA.
That's it. That's what I was listening.
Codes. And the staffing code is 1720 is the statute number for that. And NFPA in 2018, along with the International Association of Fire Chiefs and all of them, went to a, you never used to have on an engine crew for a size. You could have one, two, three, you know, bigger cities were in five and six sometimes. They went, the minimum standard now is four people. They've done all these studies, and that's what they've come up with.
So still with the per diem that we're adding, we still don't have enough to meet the, what we do?
The problem with, they're not recognized unless you have three. Three, either volunteers, call members, or per diem are the equivalency of one full-time position. So back when the chiefs came and evaluated our department, they went on NFPA 1720 standards to see where we stood. And at the end of it, they said, you guys need to immediately hire one more full-timer shift, and three per diem per shift, which is the equivalency of one. So in actuality, they're saying four full-time people are what we needed back then.
Right.
So. I don't know if that answered your question.
And what we did this past year by adding, now we'll, as of July 1, have three full-time on each shift. And they've applied for a safer grant for an additional three positions at 100% payment for all of them for a three-year period, which, if they get it, the council will have to decide if you wish to approve that or not, but would take the town to that NFPA standard of four on a shift. And in, the town applied a year ago, two years ago, and the post-mortem of the application was that the granting agencies are looking to fund agencies that will meet NFPA. And in this case, we needed, we needed six to do it. The town took three, and if they get, they're more likely to get the grant if you have three, and it brings you into NFPA than if you've got one, and you're looking for one, because it doesn't get to the standard.
You have to show pre and post award.
Got you.
Okay? And this will be our third grant we'll put in for, we were 0 for 2, because we could never make it past the first round, because we couldn't show post-grant that we could meet that standard, because like Sue said, you needed six people, and that just wasn't feasible. So, so now, we're putting in for three.
Right.
Which gives you the magic number of four per shift.
Which in reality should lower your per diem call?
Sure.
Right?
Yes.
So there is some net there.
Yeah, I think, I think the plan down the road is we get the four full-timers, consolidate the night per diem, and run a per diem when we can. We probably won't even be able to fill it seven days a week, but keep the day positioned, so you'd be able to save 80 or some $1,000 by doing away with that night shift. Yep.
This, this number four personnel, does it, does it matter what size the population of the town is? Is that determined by the population of the town, or is that every fire department, no matter if you've got 100 people or a million people in your town?
That's the standard, correct. Yep.
Thank you.
And a number of communities in our region have gone to, changed, ours are on a 53-hour schedule. A lot of communities in Mount Desert, who took over the ambulance system there, Bah Harbor, have gone to a 42-hour and had, and added six people. In order, in order for us to do that, we'd need not three more people beyond what we've done, but I think six more people beyond what we've done, and that's just not doable.
Forgive me if I'm wrong, but a couple of years back, we got a grant to add some people on.
Two.
Some EMS people, firefighter people, whatever. And, two people?
Yeah, two.
Okay, well, that was, at that time, we were told that was going to reduce this 53-hour schedule. And we were going, and after the people got here, we turned from one person on the, on crew to two, if I'm remembering correctly. If I'm not, I'm sorry, I just, that's my understanding that it was going to reduce these 53-hour weeks.
The 53-hour week schedule was changed because what was happening before was that the, the employees were pretty much virtually either working, or they were on a mandatory callback system, because we were running a lower number of hours. Well, we didn't have enough people to actually cover that, so they were, the, the schedule was changed to 53 hours, and we eliminated this mandatory callback provision that if you weren't off-duty, you weren't really off-duty, because if there was a call, it was mandated that you, that you come back. And they, the payrolls that we were seeing were hundreds of hours in a two-week period, and that's when we added two people through the grant. But we kept the 53-hour week schedule in order not to have mandatory callback for them. But the 50, the firefighters either are on a 53-hour schedule, or they're on a 42-hour schedule, pretty much. Those are the two kind of schedules that departments run. And departments that, like us, that can't afford the number of employees that a department like Mount Desert or Bah Harbor can, run 53-hour schedules instead of 42. or Bah Harbor can, run 53-hour schedules instead of 42. That's, it's either that or hire six people and reduce the hours. That's, you know, which is why we've done what we've done.
Chief, I see we have a new employee that just started in December that is at a 10-year pay rate?
Yes. He had been with us over 10 years, and he's a flight medic.
Good.
When I say a flight medic, he flew helicopters, and he's going to be a medic, transfers medic for Mass Troops this year.
Flight nurse.
A flight nurse.
Yeah.
And he had already worked with the department. We discussed this for 10 years or more.
And I guess, just, just asking from my own curiosity, I guess that you've had three people hired this year, but there's three different pay rates for folks.
Yes. That's because one of them is, there's a lot of different pay rates in the fire department. You'll see with Mr. D'Scenzo, he's the, the flight nurse.
Yeah, that one's covered. I was thinking of Teed.
Right. Teed is paid under an advanced EMT, which is one pay rate. Mingo is going to be just an EMT, so he's lower than an A-EMT. And then you get into firefighter one or firefighter two with the A-EMT or EMT, which is a different rate. There's that many grades of-
I need you guys to run my contracts, I guess.
I, I didn't do the contract. I didn't do that, so. But there are a lot of different rates for what you have for certifications, for sure.
We changed, in this last contract, if you remember, for fire and mess, there used to be all these, so many percent for this, and so many percent for that, and $10 for this, and five, and we eliminated all of that, and incorporated it into pay rates based on licensure. You know, you're firefighter one and two, and a paramedic is X, firefighter one and two, and basic is Y. But those things, instead of having all these little bits and pieces that got added on, if you did this on a call, or you did that on a call, or, which was a payroll nightmare. We now just have pay rates. The only thing I have to keep up with is who's licensed to do what. That's all.
Any other questions? Thank you. Oh, you don't get to go anywhere.
No, I'm ESO, not a, a four.
Police Department.
Again, these lines are basically the same numbers. A few numbers might be a little bit different, but should be at 75% at this time of year in the budget. The O1 line, which is the regular full-time, excuse me, payroll, proposed 3.9%. That's basically overall 3% increase with years of service increases also. So that's why it's at 3.9. That line for the police department is at 73% at the given date. The O2 line, the extra and overtime line, proposed 6.14%. There's a few items with that. There's one additional week of vacation for a 20-year employee, and that's basically 78% spent at this point. So, let's see the other one. That was with the union increase also, so it kind of goes from, you take the O1 line and go to the O2 line with years of service, and sometimes vacations go up a week, things of that nature. So, the next one is the O4 line, and that is total training payroll and expense, 8.84% proposed increase there. That has to do with some of the K9 overtime rate increased due to a yearly raise for step raises, and that is at 21% spent at this point. The O5 line, the investigation payroll, payroll line, proposed 55% increase there. The reasoning for that behind it is an increased investigation hours. Due to a lot of the cases that we're dealing with, that we haven't been dealing with that take extra time, this line over the past several years has been decreased, because we didn't use it. That is 90% spent at this point, and will be well overspent by the time the next three months are up, for sure.
Can you explain that, the cases you said that you weren't dealing with, but now are dealing with?
Basically, it's drug cases. To be honest with you, we're doing, I bet we've done 40 to 50% more search warrants, which take time, number of hours, a lot of paperwork, a lot of travel. I'm going to say upfront that it's mostly drug cases. Some sex cases with forensic interviews out of town, goes on. But the majority of all those investigations are drug cases, for sure. Sad to say, but it's true. The animal control salary, the O6 line, proposed 19.7% increase. The issue with that line is last year, we did not, I say we, I, David did not put in for the part-time person, so that there wasn't overtime. We always had that person. That line did not get put in there, and that line, that is 86% spent at this point. And the reason for that is that we did not have the part-time salary in there, as we had added that in there to cover that. The 21 line, 0% proposed increase, that's the chief's expense, that's 20, 16% spent at this point. Clothing and allowance, 0%, that's 42%, that's a union contract, that's contractual issue. Dues and travel, 13% spent at this point, 0% increase proposed. Total training expense is 63% spent at this, this time, 0% proposed increase there. Postage, is 0%, that's 37% spent at this time. 37 line, animal control supplies, that is well in the negative at this point. That is for all the adoptions and stuff we do. That is actually offset by what we take in. If we pay for an animal, the people during the adoption pay for the fees, so that's offset on our contributions account, I believe, is correct. So we don't budget a lot there, and it's overspent and recollected every year by people adopting animals. The 41 line, equipment purchase, equipment purchase, that is a 52% proposed increase. Some of this has to do with ammo costs are going up, additional ammo for training requirements, and that line at this point is 113% spent, well over. Some of that is new hires. We get a lot of their equipment out of that, and we've had a few, two or three new hires back and forth this year, and we get to buy uniforms and stuff, and that's where all that stuff comes out of. So, I'm not sure that we could ever predict how much money we needed there, more or less, due to people coming and going, but we hope that we don't need anymore. But this year has not been good. The 51 line, the total parts, parks and repairs, proposed 3.61%, that's 44% spent at this time. Telephone cost, 61 line is a 6.2% increase. The issue with that is a net motion that runs our computer cruisers, connects us from wherever we're at, through the Spillman system, down to Ellsworth. We did get an increase in that, and that line is 90% spent at this point. Total heating fuel costs, that's for the animal shelter, 0% increase there, 76% spent at this point. Total fuel costs, I did not have anything in that line yet, but Tommy and Angel Asar takes care of that, but that is, that's 65% spent at this point. And line 91, miscellaneous 0% proposed increase, a 45% spend at this point. So the overall total proposed is 5.52% for the police budget.
Animal control.
Yeah.
Zero, 05, line 05. 5,900 that you said for the assistance that wasn't in last year's budget?
Yes.
So there's that, and there's only $1,000 more than last year. What was Allison making last year? And what, what raise did she get this year?
3%.
3%.
And that's-
Her rate last year was 17.
Yeah. It was, I think it was 17, or was it 17.51?
Okay. So she was, she was part of that whole, okay.
Any other questions? Okay, next is dispatch.
All right. Going down through the same lines, basically the same numbers. The O1 account has a proposed 3.75%, that's we give a proposed 3% increase in step raises. The dispatch, that is 71% spent at this given time. The O2 line, the extra and overtime is proposed reduction of 2.14%. That's a decrease due to 12 holidays instead of 13. There was a number change in there in that account at this point, is 71% spent. Training payroll, proposed 6.3% increase. That one is a tough one for dispatch. We do have plans in the, in the near future to send people to certified terminal operator school. We have not got them there yet. These are some part-time people. We've not spent any money out of that, that line at this point, but we do have plans for the future for at least one to go to that school, which is invasible for a week. Clothing cost, 0% increase, that's 3% spent at this point. Dues and travel, 0% proposed increase. That is also 0% spent. Training expenses goes along with the training, and that's 0% proposed increase, 0% spent. Office supplies, proposed 1.97% increase. That has to do with the street reference books that we buy for the patrol people. That's 16% spent at this point. And to keep in mind on that line, that we do inventory at the end of the year, in like May, for office supplies for the next year, normally. The 50, 33 line is 0% spent at $150. We do a lot of that, to be honest, is through the PD. We don't do a lot of postage for the dispatch center. It's all through the PD. The 51 line, which is equipment maintenance and repair, a 0% proposed increase there, that's 16% spent. Telephone, 61 line, 0% proposed increase, that's 38% spent at this time. And the 91 line, which is miscellaneous in most of the budgets, 0% proposed increase, and there's been nothing spent out of that. The total proposed increase of 4.5, 4.5% for dispatch.
Questions? Next is public safety building. Just for ease of time, chief, I'm just going to talk that the two biggest increases obviously are gas and electricity. Everything else is-
Correct.
Pretty much flat rated, so I think we all knew those were coming, but Sue, you say there is a, probably a, is the gas price the same?
Public, the gas price is through Vanguard Natural Gas, and-
Are we contracted with that, or?
We are not contracted for that. What I used for a price was the average of what we paid, which took the highest, which was last July, you know, for earlier in the year, and the lower, which has been more recently to get an average cost. But, and the electric rate increase is a big hit.
Yep.
And that huge amount is just magnified. It's not any different than what people are seeing in their homes, but when you're using 90,000 kilowatt hours, makes a difference.
You can't go dark at any time, right?
Until the phone rings.
Yeah.
Any questions on that, public safety building?
The only other thing I will throw in there, and I sent the town manager an email today, was what I mentioned already, about the Spillman licensing went up, and the copier contracts went up, so that may go up a little bit, but cover for next, for next year. We're going to be $800 or $900 on the whole of the star, if we don't do that.
I think that's it for you, chief.
Public safety directives, much, the only proposed increase there is in salaries for myself and the chaplain. And real quickly, to just go down through those lines, 21 line, directive expenses, 56% spent. Training expenses, 15%. Dues and travel is 54% spent. Clothing is 44% spent, and miscellaneous is 69% spent this time.
Questions on that? Last one we have is utilities.
Yes, and that is streetlights and hydrant rental. The, um, the, we're very fortunate in that our streetlights, the conversion to LED made a big difference in the overall cost, so the rate increase hit, hit that less hard than, based on our, our, we used to, years ago, budget almost $50,000 a year for streetlights, and now we're down to $36.6 even in that. That is, on the other side of that hydrant rental, the water district is seeking a rate increase that would take effect from the second, third, and fourth quarters of our fiscal year, that are starting in September, of 10%. And that's why it's 7% for those three quarters, that it would, overall, 10% increase in hydrant rentals. So, that's the basis for that overall 7.1% increase.
Questions on that? Any questions on anything? We've brought over tonight. All right. Next Thursday, we'll meet at 6 o'clock again. We'll have CIP, Parks and Rec, Barita Waterfront, and Social Services. Do that, take a motion for adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor? Opposed?